This meeting is called to order. It is 7:01 on Tuesday, November the 22nd. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk Norris, would you take a roll call?
I will. Mayor McClellan, Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Present.
Mayor McClellan is out tonight. Her husband is not well, so please direct your thoughts and prayers to her. Councilwoman Burns is ill tonight, and please direct your thoughts and prayers to her as well. All right. The next business is the consent agenda where we just read off what we've got. We're not going to go over it unless somebody would like to pull something off the consent agenda. We have the regular city council meeting minutes for November 7th. We have the recycling commission meeting minutes of September 15th. We've got a request to approve payment of invoices from OHM advisors for the GIS DWAM grant and Nine Mile Road Design Engineering for the amount of $22,597. We've got a request to approve payment application number four for the 2022 Water Main Replacement Project, M 737, to Mark Anthony Contracting of Milford for $566,436.98. We have a request to schedule a public hearing for December 5th to receive public comment on the allocation of the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Funds. And we have licenses new and renewals submitted for November 21st, 2022. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I will. All right, I'll second it.
We need a vote on that?
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Do we have any visiting elected officials who'd like to speak? I don't see any. Okay. And now our Economic Development Director, Kim Maroney, is going to do a presentation on the Corridor Improvement Authority and a report. Kim?
I am here in front of you to present the fiscal 2021-22 CIA Annual Report. It is something that is required per legislation. This is our second public meeting in presenting this information to the public. So the Corridor Improvement Authority functions similar to a downtown development authority. The only thing that really differs there is we don't have a traditional downtown, so we focus on certain sections and commercial corridors within the city, and that comprises 11 Mile Road, Coolidge, and portions of Nine Mile Road. In the last fiscal year, we issued six building permits within the district for a value of Our initial base property value for the Corridor Improvement Authority was 3.4 million, and it is now at 3.8 million by the end of the last fiscal year. If you look at the asking rent per square foot, district-wide, it went up from 2021 to 2022 by 19% at $13.94 a square foot. If we break it down into the different areas, we have Coolidge Highway. As you can see, the vacancy rates went down, which is a good sign. That means less vacancies per area. Market rent per square foot went up, and market sale price per square foot went up as well. Breaking down 11 Mile Road, this one did have a slight increase in vacancies, a .1%. Market rent per square foot did go up again, as well as market sale price per square foot. On the Nine Mile Road corridor, we had our vacancy rates go down almost one full percentage point. The market rent per square foot went up again, as well as the market sale price per square foot. And these are things that we look at every year to see how well the district is performing, especially based on improvements that we're making there. So the numbers are all going in the right direction. Some of our highlights for 2021. The Nine Mile Linear Parks were completed with the addition of four new sculptures. Additional streetscape furniture and planter pots were purchased in all different areas of the district. We did create the social district on 11 Mile. We began planning for the water tower social district enhancement and reconstruct of the parking area. We started working with Urban Main Street to implement a plan, and site plan approval for the first transit-oriented housing development on Nine Mile Road, the Nines, was also completed. We welcomed 14 new businesses last fiscal year with a list of them here. And facade grants is a program that we do, and we only gave out $3,895 in facade grants, but the actual improvements, the value, was $11,394. It was two projects that you see listed here. We do budget every year, $15,000 a year for this program, and we hope more companies and businesses actually take advantage of it. We've met with a lot lately that want to take advantage of it, so if they all do decide to this year, then we may ask the CIA to increase that budget line item so we can do more improvements within our district. And that is the end of my show. Are there any questions?
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, I have a question. A couple weeks ago, I believe Mr. Sherman had asked about that eight mile Greenfield area, that corridor there across from Northland, Southfield Side. Are any of the businesses that we've talked to over there or?
For the facade improvement program?
Yes.
We have talked to a few of the property owners in that area about the facade improvement program. The only problem with that area is it is not covered under the Corridor Improvement Authority District, so any funds have to be spent within the Corridor Improvement Authority. That area does not have a whole lot of money left in the pot for facade grants. We actually did some fundraising for that pot of money a few years back, and I believe we have about $6,000 left there. Once that's gone, it's gone, unless we get more donations.
Could you include that section of Greenfield in the Corridor Improvement Authority at some point?
We can't include it in this Corridor Improvement Authority. We could create a second Corridor Improvement Authority. The issue there is the county usually supports fully only one district, or one TIP district, I should say. If we did create a second one, they would only support, I believe it's at 50%, so instead of giving 100% of the tax capture, which is the advantage of doing this, we would only get 50%. But it is something we could look into in the future.
I just want to clarify something, Kim, that that's only on their capture portion, correct?
Correct.
So the rest of it would be the same capture.
Any other questions? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Maroney, so we've got any public hearings? I don't think so today. No communications, no special licenses. We have accounting reports.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, I'll make the motion for the approval of payment of invoices submitted by Garrett-Luca Mill &amp; PC for legal services in the Tualatin Mountain of $13,629.99. I'll second.
Okay. Motion. Clerk Norris, do we do roll call?
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
And?
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes. Okay. Here we go. Excuse me. All right. We've got... Okay, next up, we have first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82 Utilities, Article 5, Rates and Charges Payment of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Oak Park. City is proposing to amend Section 82 to 315. The ordinance amendment allows owners of residential owner-occupied properties to file for a payment plan for delinquent utilities after the mailing of a shut-off notice and corrects the deposit required on accounts where the city is properly notified in accordance with 82 313 that a tenant is responsible for utility charges to ensure consistency with Section 82 316. And City Attorney Duff, will you take it from here?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
You're here?
Okay. As you indicated, the proposed revisions are limited to allow residents to enter into payment plans after mailing of a shut-off notice. These revisions are limited only to owner-occupied residential properties. We will require a deposit of one and one-half times the average annual utility bills in circumstances where a tenant is assuming responsibility for the water bill. This is with respect to the tenants, and we're seeking... This is the first reading today, and we will have a second reading at your next city council meeting.
I'll make the motion. Excuse me. Second.
Do we have any questions about this? I do, actually. I have a question. So why are we amending this ordinance? Is it because we're correcting something that should have been to begin with?
No. Well, part of it is a correction with respect to the tenant's ability to take on the responsibility for payment, but we're actually amending this at the request specifically of city council. We recognized and wanted to give a break to residents' owner-occupied homes with respect to water bills and give additional time for payment. So this is just, it's not to correct, but again, just to give additional relief to our residents.
And the payment plan, of course, are we setting any kind of timeline in which the water bill, the delinquent bills, have to be paid?
We are, and I'm going to have to defer to, and we do not have our water supervisor here. We are, and it's set up through the water department. I do not have the specifics for the payment plan with me.
And I know this does not apply to commercial properties. Why not?
Because, again, the request was specifically just with respect to our residential property owners, and again, we thought that was the best avenue to provide relief for the homeowners.
Okay, so this, then, will allow property owners to come to the city for a payment plan after they've gotten a shut-off notice?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Do we need a roll call vote?
We do.
Okay.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
I have a question.
Okay.
If I vote no, does it pass? It doesn't? Because two out of three is a majority, but it's got to be majority of council? Okay. I'm voting yes anyway. I was just curious. It's not very often we only have three here.
13B.
Sorry for making your life more difficult than it needs to be, Ed.
13B, you'll notice Councilmen Radner and Whitehead that there is a revised version of 13B at your... Yes, next to your laptops. So 13B is a resolution regarding the first... This is a first reading of a proposal to amend the name of our Technical and Planning Department. And again, it's this Attorney, City Manager Tungay, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is actually one that is coming before you initially at my request. The name Technical and Planning does not fit the current criteria. It's a antiquated, very confusing name. We actually have the signage, we've had the signage for municipal services on the building for some time. We're just now getting around to doing it. It's something that's long overdue and really falls more in line with what other local units of government have done. I don't think anybody knows what technical and planning means. I'm still trying to figure it out myself. But municipal services... And for us, you know, part of this is the names, the words municipal services couples nicely with the other side of the aisle in our city government, our Community Services Division, which Crystal Van Leek is our deputy city manager of. So this falls really nicely and really spells out what they do, provide municipal services.
You know, technical and planning is actually a very simple definition. It means bother, rob, and dave.
But how does DPW fit into this?
Well, they don't currently fit into this, but we don't know what the future will hold yet, but not currently, but...
Do we have a motion to approve this amendment to change the name of Technical and Planning to Municipal Services?
I'll move.
Second.
We need a vote on this? Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner? Yes. Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Director Barrett, how long is it going to take you to get used to this new change?
Actually, we started the non-legal changes in the last month. For the longer TMD, we could be MS.
Okay, MS. Like it. Okay. The next item we have is a resolution to approve a proposed site lease agreement with Dish Wireless LLC. Trade off?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Council is being asked to approve a proposed three-year, non-exclusive lease agreement for placement of a Dish antenna on the city water tower. The consideration is for $4,000 per month, subject to final city attorney approval of the lease agreement. Total, the lease is expected to generate $144,000 in revenue. We are still working on finalizing the final terms with our, with DPW director, and I just note, excuse me, that your city charter requires council to approve a lease of any city property, and the limits on the lease is for three years, which we have proposed. We also have specific requirements for Dish to access the water tower, which is subject to our existing access agreement, as well as having accompaniment by a city employee at all times for security reasons. They're also required to have appropriate insurance in place, naming the city as an additional insured, and they must cover the cost of any electrical service and the installation of a separate electric meter for their equipment. Again, we've been working through DPW. We have all the specs have been approved, and subject to, again, further review of the, or final review of the lease terms, we're seeking your approval this evening.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? I have a couple of questions. When it says "non-exclusive," does that mean that other companies may want to use the water tower?
That is correct.
Okay. For their antennas?
That's right.
And do.
And that's correct. They do.
So who's there now?
Oh, gosh. Lots.
Come on up.
Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem. Just give me a second. We were just discussing this today. I'll bring this right up on my computer, but I think Sprint is on there and maybe DTE, but we're just reviewing some of our revenue for finance.
Maybe we can have Verizon to put something there. I've been having a little trouble with my service.
It is a... It's a multitude of...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
...different common.
I know, but...
Can I just weigh in while he's looking?
Yes.
I think our biggest concern was just to make the... We did not want to inhibit the aesthetic nature of the water tower. So there are some renderings attached in the packet here that I think kind of give us some comfort in that area.
Based off the records I'm looking at, off the cockpits, I think just Sprint is up there right now. We had a vacate one maybe seven, eight years ago, and it took their structure away. So we do have other facilities on that tower.
So I'm looking at the picture, but it doesn't show where these antennas are going to be. Are they up on the pole, or how does it work?
Did we decide on railing? So the placement's going to be on the railing and strategically placed so you don't cover the City of Oak Park symbol or the name on the tower. But they're out there and they're smaller than the previous things.
And is that, is that rent, the lease, the terms of the lease, is that, is that... Is $4,000 a month about what other companies are paying?
Yes, yes. It's the market rate.
And I would hate to see that tower uglified. I sort of like it. It's a nice tower. It's dramatic.
I will say that we go through great lengths to ensure that the color and the placement is not obtrusive. I mean, we even look for placement, again, so it blends into the city line and landscape as much as possible.
I didn't know that anybody used satellites on the roof of a TV dish.
No.
I guess they do. Okay, well, thank you. Do we have any other questions? Okay, I think we need a vote.
We actually need a motion.
We need a motion, sir?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Do we get a vote?
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes. Okay. City Manager Tungay?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. So a couple of quick things I wanted to talk about before we get to 15A. I do want to ask Deputy City Manager Crystal Van Leek to join me at the podium for 15A, but I would, before that, like to say thank you to everybody, our city clerk's office, our volunteers, our election workers, for a very successful general election. We had a 51.94% turnout in the City of Oak Park.
Wow.
And that was as compared to the last gubernatorial election, where we had a 58.48% turnout. So a little bit lower than our previous election, but the election went off without a hitch. Thank you very much. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Tim Chahorsky for his service to the City of Oak Park. He's leaving us. Tim's in the back. Tim, stand up. Thank you for your service to our city, sir.
Where's he going? Hallmark?
We'll miss you.
Busy?
Thank you for everything that you've done in your time here, Tim. Thank you so much. As our first-ever resident services coordinator, you have some big shoes to fill. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, 15A, Deputy City Manager Crystal Van Leek, please.
Thank you, City Manager. I also wanted to just thank Tim for opening up our resident services coordinator role. He's the first one in that position. He's done a wonderful job with it over the last year, so we're very, we're thankful that you've been here and hope you do best in all of your future endeavors. Okay, 15A.
Should we do a piece of your picture?
15A. Excuse me. Tonight, we are asking you to approve the agreement between Skurbeck Family Carnival and the City of Oak Park for Summer Blast, which this year is scheduled for June 16th, 17th, and 18th. The agreement looks identical to the one that you signed last year, and it's been reviewed by the city attorney. But if you have any questions, hopefully I can answer them.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, may I just make a comment?
Please.
I really like this company, Skurbeck Family. I actually got a chance to meet the owner after I had an interview on Fox, thanks to Director Flynn for setting that up over the summer during Summer Blast to help promote. And I met the owner, and then he told me that I actually was going to be in the same place that he was going to be at two weeks later from leaving Oak Park, because they go all over the state. It's a family business. The owner, the current owner, he inherited it from his dad, and his son is a teenager who's out there working, and he was working in the park for Summer Blast, so he's learning the company business. But I met him two weeks after our Summer Blast in Bay City of all places for fireworks, and they had the whole works going, just so real, and they treated me just as well as they did as when I was in Oak Park. So I hope we keep this relationship and foster it, and I'm glad to see that they're coming back for a second year, so.
Mayor Pro Tem, may I just add to that?
Sure.
I also, Crystal was hoping you could, you could talk a little bit about it, but I think their plan is to add some amenities to their lineup, correct?
Yes. Yeah, so the plan for this year, they're working with Lori and her team to replace some things a little bit differently this year, but also to add five new rides and also some additional food vendors. And we're also, the plan is to kind of converge the food vending area with the beer and wine tent so that there's a little bit more cohesion between those two things. And the rides will be coming out into the parking lot, where last year you saw some of those tents on Sunday. We need more space, so there'll be more Carnival rides, five new ones this year. They haven't decided which ones exactly just yet, but there will be five new rides and then additional food vendors.
Awesome. That's great. Wonderful. Do we have a motion to approve this agreement?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Do we need a vote on this?
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
And the next?
Okay. 15B, Director David DeCosta, please.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and City Manager Tungay. Before you tonight, the Public Works Department is requesting authorization to purchase the following vehicles from the Macomb County and Rochester Hills pre-bid contracts as part of the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget. These vehicles will be assigned to our Streets Division. They are both 2023 Ford F450 four-by-fours. One is for the chassis, and then the second one is the up fittings of the dump box and the plow blades and things like that. Funding is available in the major streets, local streets, and water sewer funds. It is recommended that City Council authorize the Public Works Department to participate in the Macomb County and Rochester Hills pre-bid contracts for these vehicles purchased, totaling $214,324. Available if you have any questions.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve?
I'll move. Or second. And I have a question also, because I don't... Cars are Chinese to me. 2023 Ford F450 four-by-four chassis only, and then vehicle upfitting, and then there's two of each. Are these four vehicles?
Two vehicles.
Okay.
The way we purchase our large fleet is basically it's a stripped-down truck, no bed on it like you would see a traditional tail bed on the back of a truck. It's just a chassis with a driving cab. We send it out to another vendor for the, what we call the vehicle upfitting, and that's where they put the dump box in the back, the plow, the tailgate...
Oh.
And all the accessories to make it what we need it to be.
So first, we get the chassis, then?
Correct.
Round two is the...
Correct.
Got it. Okay. All right. Cool. Now I understand. Thank you.
Are these vehicles available at this point?
I wish. I hope we get them by maybe springtime. I'm guessing at the best. Hopefully by next summer.
Will we be locked in at this price, or?
Yes.
And we all get to take it first spin, right?
We get it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
We have the motion and the second. We're ready to vote.
Okay. We need a roll call vote?
Sure. Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, on behalf of all of the members of the city staff, I wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to all of you, as well as to all of our residents. Thank you very much. That completes the city manager report for this evening.
Okay. We are moving to call to the audience. So Clerk Norris, who do we have?
Yeah, we have some... Some audience members who would like to speak.
Good evening. As a member of the Recycling and Environmental Commission, at our last meeting last week, the topic came up of whether the city is purchasing or going to consider purchasing electric vehicles, and especially with what Dave just talked about, you know, buying new vehicles, is that something that's under consideration for, you know, the vehicles that the city uses? And the other thing that we talked about related was, is the city considering putting up charging stations either at City Hall? And I don't know if this came up when the recreation tenure plan, you know, putting up charging stations at the new, you know, upgraded city parks and whatnot, that would be a good place to consider. And lastly, without mentioning any particular names, it would be very nice if our assigned city council member would be present at our monthly meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next, Barbara Stone.
Next, Barbara Stone.
Been in Oak Park for over thirty-five years, the two zero eight two one Gardner Street. Uh, my concern is there's an abandoned vacant home at two one three five zero Gardner, and it's like a jungle has covered the front of that house. I mean, it's horrible. And I don't know what can be done about it, but, um, it's just awful. I think something should be done about it, but I don't know what can be done about it by the city, if anything. And for that house to look like that for over two years or longer, I mean, it's just crazy.
Well, first of all, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um, immediately, directly behind you is Director Robert Barrett, and one of the departments that he oversees is our Code Enforcement Division, and I'm pretty sure as you were talking, I saw him taking notes, two one three five zero Gardner.
Yes.
And we will look into that property tomorrow or the next day.
That would be great. There is, there is, uh, a notice of some sort that's on that door, but it's been there forever, and nothing's being done. I mean, the grass is overgrown. It looks awful. It really does. And I have one other question. I didn't put it on, on, uh, my write-up. There is a new neighbor, um, near where I live across the street. She, she has a very large German shepherd. Um, she chains her dog to her front rail, her, her railing on, of the front of her walkway, and that dog is terrifying people. Can anything be done about that?
Um, I would, I, I don't want you to give any more information on this particular property, but Director Barrett, if you could speak to her afterwards, um, we will look into that as well.
That would be great. I mean, it's very intimidating. I have a dog, but it's a little Maltese, uh, and I wouldn't chain him to the front and let him bark at people. So, I mean, that's all I'm gonna say about it, but it's quite intimidating, a dog that size. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Edward Howell. I live at two one six three zero Kipling. I've been there since seventy-eight. I've got two questions. The first, if, was it a deadline or is it a deadline from the finish north end? And secondly, about the deer population, we have a ring system, and two or three o'clock in the morning, you know, you got motion, it go off, and you look at it, and you got deer all in your backyard, so I just wonder. I know Southfield, they're past the audience, where they could kill them. I just wonder, and if thing Oak Park is going to do, uh, consider doing.
Well, first of all, thank you for both of those concerns. So I just, I, I probably should have given an update about this. Um, Director Cooper and I, and our communications director, um, after the last council meeting, went down into the south part of the city personally and observed the deer situation. And quite honestly, I, I don't know how Director Cooper would, would illustrate it, but I would say I was pretty shocked to see both the number of deer and how, um, domesticated they are, let's say. And we are gonna continue to monitor very closely what's going on. Um, to date, I don't know of a single instance where a deer has injured anyone or been hit or anything like that. Of course, if that happens, we'll, we'll deal with it accordingly. Um, but I think you know what's happening is all the development in the south part of our city is pushing deer, and there's just more deer. There're just some of these conservation efforts. Every community that we talk to, and including Southfield, who just had an ordinance put in place, is addressing and dealing with the same issue. As far as North End, nobody is more angry about North End than me. Let's just say that. Um, this project is taking longer than we ever had imagined. There is a concrete shortage that the vendor is dealing with. Um, we are being very diligent in dealing with, with them and the shortage and trying to get this project completed. This is way overdue, um, but we're doing everything we can to make sure that they meet their objectives and we hold them to it.
Back to the deer, I don't think they hurt anyone. They just eat up people's flowers and garden.
Well, and I, yeah, and we witnessed that. It's, it's, it's crazy. I, I would have never imagined, and I will just say, I, I personally, um, approached one of the bucks. Um, I think it's the biggest deer I've ever seen. And it didn't seem scared of me at all, so I thought that was very interesting. But, so we'll continue to just monitor, um, and, you know, make sure people are safe. Um, and if it gets worse, then we'll have to deal with it, but right now, I don't think it's a situation where we need to have a deer call or anything like that, but who knows?
Well, I get to go first this time. This is a reverse. Thank you. Just wanna, um, give my condolences to the Wittenberg family. They're dealing with a tough loss in their family, so I just wanna send my present thoughts to them. I wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody who voted. Uh, appreciate you all exercising that right. And then lastly, um, and I'll be brief today, um, hopefully everybody has a great Thanksgiving. Uh, we have a lot to be grateful for in the City of Oak Park, um, and so hopefully everybody has a great, safe holiday and enjoys their family. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Chili, suddenly, um, and, um, thank you. Bye.